Is Councilor Joe coming today?
I think so.
Yeah.
Well, maybe to honor his words with a word of prayer and thank you.
Okay. My Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this opportunity we have to serve on Town Council and the opportunity we have to have our council meeting tonight and pray that Thy Spirit will be with us as we discuss the agenda pieces and that we might be inspired and be able to guide our community the way that Thou would have us do and grateful for our blessings, for families and for all that we've been blessed with. And I ask Thy Spirit to be with us now in the name of Jesus Christ.
Wonderful. Thank you. Well, thank you, Councilor. And we are today, the fourteenth of August, and it's 5:00 PM, and we're going to have our regular Cardston Town Council meeting. We'd like to recognize Councilor Corey MacAlcy for General 32 and Bill Pid for the Tampa Stars. Thank you so much to the media and both of you for being here so diligently reporting. We will call a meeting tomorrow and we have an agenda that needs to be approved. So...
We'll change the resolutions.
Yeah. Changes or addition to the agenda. Sing none. All in favor?
Please, motion.
All in favor? Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm going a little too quick. All in favor? Thank you. Councilor Joe, welcome. We have a Councilor called on holidays and he will not be with us at this time. We do not have a delegation. The delegation was canceled and will be rescheduled for next meeting. Adoptions of minutes, of July the tenth, two thousand and eighteen. I read them and didn't see anything that struck me as being incorrect. So...
I move, you have the minutes of July ten.
Okay. Councilor Ben, we move to approve the minutes. Questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. All right. Let's go to item six, bylaw and policy. We have a bylaw amendment fifteen eighty-four A, which was an amendment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. If you recall, we added one member to create a committee of seven. So we had passed first and second reading. We now need to consider third reading.
I move third reading of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee Amendment, Bylaw fifteen eighty-four A.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. Now, the next item is much more complex, and we will call on our CEO Jeff to help us a little bit. It's regarding the draft of off-site levy bylaw, and we need to have really thorough discussion on this item. Jeff?
Okay. Thank you. You had quite a bit of information on this in your background there. And the reason we didn't draft the bylaw yet is there's still a number of considerations prior to getting to that point, many of them very political considerations. So what I wanted to do is just go through, I put in the previous bylaw, and in that bylaw you saw that the off-site levies in the town were broken up into zones, basically by structure plan is how the former off-site levy bylaw read. So, for example, you had the west area structure plan was at sixty-three hundred dollars an acre, east area six thousand an acre, I'm rounding roughly, west industrial eighteen thousand, and so on. This bylaw was rescinded. And I put in the background here, my opinion, now I was not the administrator at the time, but my opinion is the reason it was rescinded was, one, there was considerable pressure on council to rescind from developers, so there was a bit of a parade of delegations to come and speak against the bylaw. And, two, when you do a bylaw, you need to make sure your numbers are right. You don't want to guess. You only have one shot at it. So once something's subdivided, I can't retroactively apply a bylaw levy. So you have to have it right the first time, but you don't want it subject to tremendous challenge. So those are the two things that stick out of my mind. And so at that time, the bylaw was rescinded. And so we have continued without a specific off-site levy bylaw. Now, to be clear, just so we're on the same page, off-site levies are just that. They are for charges, costs that will be incurred for things away from the site of the development. So the best example that you see nowadays is stormwater retention or upgrades to the water plant, for example. So if we had a development coming in, two hundred and fifty units was going to require tremendous water, we needed to upgrade the lift station for the water plant. That lift station isn't on the development, but that development necessitated the increase. Stormwater ponds are very, very common with these now. You put in a pond that's going to service a very large area, it may have nothing, it's not touching this guy's development or this person's development or this person's, but they're all going to benefit from it. So we're not talking about costs related to the development. So the developer, if they need to pay for water lines, sewer lines, roads, sidewalks, this is not that. These are things not included in their development. And so when we redid the infrastructure master plan last year, Nolan and Albert Tego and I on a couple of occasions, but mostly those two, have sat down and said, okay, historically have we made improvements that will benefit these undeveloped areas? And what do we get planned in the future that will benefit these undeveloped areas? So we're not looking at developed land right now. We're looking at about six hundred and eighty-seven acres within the town that are currently not subdivided to their most dense is what's being addressed. So those are what was listed. I put a little sheet that was just showing the projects. Then there's this whole notion of percentage of community benefit. So, for example, when we replace water and sewer lines all the way up Second Avenue, that's really predominantly for the benefit of Second Avenue. But now new developments past that will tie into that new infrastructure. So then we have this debate about what percentage of that cost is, sticks with the residents of Second Avenue and what percentage do we attribute to new development? So those are numbers we ought to talk about as we go down this road, too. But before we break down the numbers too seriously, there's some big political questions that need to be asked. Is there an appetite for off-site levies? There's not a wrong answer here, Councilor. I want to be very clear. They are a tool that is used by many municipalities to recoup these type of costs, but they're certainly not mandatory. But if you are not entertaining off-site levies, then the question must be debated, how is it that we are going to fund these types of infrastructure projects and should the rest of the residents pay a share of that when they are not beneficiaries of sale in the development? So you start to have that discussion that nobody in a, well, I shouldn't say nobody because I don't know all your business dealings, but generally, the population is not going to benefit when the east side area structure plan begins development. The owner of that landlord, that's the only beneficiary. So the question is, how much should Jeff's and Council Browns and Council Barnes taxes pay for the infrastructure required for them? It's a very difficult and touchy political question because I can make debates on both sides, and I can say, well, if you want to frustrate development in the community, put in an off-site levy. I can stand here and give a rousing debate along those lines, but on the other hand, I can make a rousing debate saying, why does Joan Jane taxpayer have to pad the pockets of the developer? No, I have no idea what the margin of development is. I don't know what someone would make in any of that development. Those are unknowns, but there's a principle there. And so as we got putting these numbers together, and the other thing we put in this package you saw was what other communities in the region are doing. And what we found, and I was a bit surprised by this, is that the smaller communities in the region aren't using levies. The larger communities are, of course, the big cities. We threw Calgary in there simply as a reference point, but High River, Medicine Hat, Tabor, they're using them. Some of them considerable, Lethbridge is a hundred thousand dollars an acre. And they're using those to fund off-site infrastructure. But McGrath, Sterling, Raymond, Pincher, they're not using them. And so we find ourselves, putting ourselves in this competitive disadvantage environment based on the region, or if you all have these wonderful crystal balls politically, are people's purchasing decisions geographically based, or if they want to be in Carson, they're going to be in Carson, levy or not? That's the other side of this coin. So even though I gave you a whole bunch of information, it all ends with question marks. There's so many things to discuss. I did put a few questions as far as, oh, the other thing I should mention is when we met with Albert Tego, Albert, I asked him to come consult with us on this because he sat on the city of Lethbridge's off-site levy development group. They called some engineers in, they called developers, they got quite a group together. And Lethbridge came out of there where they canceled their area-specific levy and just made a uniform levy for the city. So no matter where you develop, in the city, the off-site levy is this much per acre. And it's irrespective of that specific structure plan. Now, the reason they did it would be far different than the reason we would potentially do it. Theirs is they were getting leapfrogging, meaning that if this area had a higher levy, they were simply trying to pull in infrastructure or develop in a different, it was moving the development decision of developers based on where the levy was because they were having these wild swings per acre in development. And so they decided that in order to try not to leapfrog, where you might have a whole section in central area structure plan that is undeveloped, but you're having to run infrastructure to the far north one, but not utilizing it in the center. So you're getting this leapfrogging effect. You can see that actually if you go east of Lethbridge, where you have nothing for a big chunk of time and then development and the business park starts, even though it's all serviced. So they had these kind of leapfrogging issues. The recommendation from Albert was just have a uniform levy. And then you're not incenting owners of one area structure over others for development, you're not penalizing one over the other, those kinds of things. So that was the recommendation. The other issue with levies, and the mayor will recall, we were in the four mayors and CIO's meeting, and I posed this question to Raymond McGrath Sterling. I said, what are you guys doing for levies? And they said, we're not. And one of the reasons was quite interesting to me, this came from Raymond, from Scott and Raymond, he said, we don't have guys coming in and developing a fifty-acre track. That's not what's happening here. We have a guy who owns an acre and a half and wants to subdivide one off. We got a guy that has an extra long lot and wants to subdivide the backup. So the question is, are we going to hit him with a fifteen thousand dollar an acre levy on one lot? Is that reasonable? And they determined for them that based on the style of their development, it wasn't. But, and I think the mayor could speak to this, they could not reconcile why they would assign those costs to the rest of the taxpayer and public. So you now reduce the cost for this developer by fifteen thousand on his acre, thanks to everyone else's taxation.
So they're being subsidized.
So why do you increase their margin, their profit margin? But it may frustrate the subdivision and sale of that lot. So there's all these kinds of discussions to be having. The other thing is, and this is if I was in the camp saying, well, if you put levies on, you'll kill development. And by the way, if you go ahead with first reading of an off-site levy bylaw, you'll require public hearing, and you're going to hear all that. Just simple as that. The same audience that was here in two thousand and twelve will be here in two thousand and eighteen. Of course, they will.
Jeff, can I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
Since we are on the idea of developer being subsidized, we have two developments in town that has received some special kind of treatment to see the development of those areas, being the Atkins Development and the Ellison Development.
Okay. Yeah.
And there, it was decided that something like near a thousand dollars was what was going to be levied in order to take care of water, sewer, electrical, and tax on the electrical. So we have a form of precedent historically. What I don't really understand is how long do they have to kind of pay that back?
Right. So those two developments in particular, I don't have their development agreements in front, and maybe should, but I think I'm correct in saying, those charges were in the old off-site levy bylaw. You saw them below the other area structures, and it was so much per utility. And they also exist within their development agreements. So they're running in perpetuity. When one sells, they have to pay that fee. So that was the agreement they made at the time. To be frank, I'm not sure that I totally agree with that agreement. I'm not trying to condemn those that made it at the time, but what you did is, is the town said, well, we're going to have to invest in infrastructure, extend it to your development. We're going to have to put some money in, and then we're going to ride the risk with you. We're going to let you pay us in fifty years if that's how long it takes to sell these lots. We're going to let, so they didn't make the developer pay that true cost upfront.
Okay.
And I'm not, and I'm not saying, I mean, this is such a minimal amount, it may be, maybe doesn't matter. But if you looked, I'll use another one, Darren Shaw's development. So on those lots, there's about twelve thousand, Jill, does that sound about right? So when he sells a lot, he's got to pay the town about twelve thousand. And the town agreed at the time, instead of him having to upfront it, that he would pay it as they sell. Now, thankfully, that street is getting close to sold out. And so we'll recoup those costs relatively decent. I mean, we're on fifty, ten years now, anyway, ten or twelve years. But in a reasonable amount of time, those costs will be recouped. You have discretion as a council, even if you implement a levy, to stage the payment of the levy. So the terms of the payment of levy are still negotiable to you. So, for example, I think Nolan put the, put the example that if you took Ellison and Atkins, and they had to pay an eleven thousand dollar an acre levy upfront, they'd be paying about a quarter million dollars each respectively in off-site levies to the town. Now, you could have said, either it's prior development, we'll split it over the number of subdivided lots, you pay it when it's sold. We would have, we would have had some discretion at the time to have that discussion. But one of the reasons those two had the two hundred and eighty-five dollar agreements is they paid for all costs associated with utilities on their property. So there wasn't an existing town road that they owned one side of, or there wasn't a road that already had a water line through it. But they started at the raw land and all the way up to sidewalks, curb, and gutter, paid all those costs. And we had a reasonable extension of those developments. So that was what was negotiated at the time.
Jeff, section six forty-eight of the MGA, has that been revised according to what was at twenty-eleven?
So this, good question. I can, I did not compare the previous MGA to the January twenty-eighteen. I didn't do that, so I don't know. I just know this is the most current version.
Okay.
I do know what was added is new types of levies, which I didn't put in your background there. If you go through all the subsections of six forty-eight, now there's school levies and portable housing levies and fire hall levies like the...
Rec centers.
Yeah. They added a bunch that you can do for. So that's new in twenty-eighteen.
Yeah.
But we didn't consider that when we did our spreadsheet for Calasay. In our community, the size of this community, I don't think it's reasonable that we start levying for a future school. I don't know. It didn't seem like that was something we wanted to add. And so we just put in the projects we have. The other thing I would point out is you as a council, if you determined philosophically you wanted to proceed with the levy, but you didn't like the number, so the number's a little steep. Well, we can have a debate about, do we try and recoup historical costs? So I have a one point six million dollar Lee Creek Trump project that we did two years ago, and it's reasonable within the levy to say that entire west area is going to benefit from that when it develops. That's why it's oversized, that's why it's sized the way it is. So a good percentage of that project needs to come back to the town in the future development. That's a debate we can have and you can have, that you might be just, okay, anything going forward, we're entertaining, but we're not entertaining historical costs. That would mitigate the price, but you also may want to recoup some of those historical costs because those developments benefit from it. So there's just a million things here to consider. And frankly, while I recognize there's so many nuances to this, I am looking for, maybe just to start, philosophically, is there political appetite for levy?
Yeah. And I really believe that that is the proper start point for us. Because in the past, council had decided that developers needed to bear the cost. And that was the way it went. Except that when we had that schedule proposed to developer, developer pointed out that the costing was inaccurate in their perception. And so the bylaw was scrapped in consequence. And therefore, we need to decide what's going to happen for the future. And there goes again the same discussion. What is it, what is our aim? Is our aim to increase development in our town? Our infrastructures are built to support sixty-nine hundred people in this town. Right now, we are thirty-nine hundred people. So we have capacity. We also have a lot of lots in town that have never been sold yet and not developed. So do we want to see more development? And are we trying to encourage the small land owner to divide up whatever they have to create two or three lots or four lots on their property? Or do we want a very large developer, and that becomes a different story?
If I could just point out, one acute example of this is we'll use the west area structure plan, the Third Avenue. So all the way from Ken Doyds, Lynn Jensen's, through John Shafers, we're having a west area structure plan public hearing next council meeting, that whole grid. Had we had a, let's use this levy just for example, had we had this levy in place six years ago, we would have collected most of the money required for the stormwater pond that we will be, by Alberta regulation, required to put in there when that development hits a tipping point. And it's getting there. It's getting close. So all by Ken Doyds' house, we've purchased this land to build a big stormwater holding pond.
Is that on the south side of Ken's?
Correct. Yeah. Runs the south and then up behind by Ryans and by Linds.
Right.
And the Town Purchase Act, because we knew that there was going to have to be stormwater because there's a culvert that goes into our storm system there. But when we have big floods, we're over capacity. So this is intended to hold the water till this main event passes and then release it through the system. So we're going to have a half a million dollar touch on our hands. Where had we collected, we've seen all the subdivision that's happened in that area since two thousand and twelve. We've seen pretty good subdivision up there. Roads have extended, we've got them around Cody Toons, we've got them down to Third Avenue now, we have more planned. Our opportunity to collect money out of that area structure plan is very limited now. And I'm not suggesting anything untoward by developers. They did exactly what the bylaw of today allowed for. Absolutely. No question. That's not where I'm getting at with this. But what I'm getting at is, so when we're faced with a half a million dollar stormwater pond in likely four or five years from now, does Joan Jane taxpayer just pay the brunt of it? Because it wasn't needed until those houses went there.
Yeah.
They necessitate that type of treatment.
And there's not grants available for that type of stuff.
Well, you open up another interesting vein of this. So we've got, for example, one to six, eight, I got two million dollars worth of historical cost items in that spreadsheet. I don't know off the top of my head, but I take a wild stab at about forty to fifty percent of that was paid for by provincial grant.
Yeah, exactly.
So you open up this discussion to say, well, is it reasonable to charge a levy on items that were grant funded? My opinion is yes, by the way, because we had discretion over where we used the grant.
Yes.
We could have used it here or there, where we didn't have to grant fund it. We chose to. We weren't required to. So I find the storm pond in the west area structure plan for me is just a really good example to look at and say, we're about at the point where that's going to be required. And the question is, where's the funding coming from for it? Because we're not collecting levy.
Councilor Ben. Jeff, when we talk about a storm, a stormwater retention pond, are we going to develop these ponds so that it makes it look like a real nice little lake in the block area? Or are we just going to leave a hole?
Right. So you got a couple ways, you got three ways to look at them, and we've seen proposals for all three. You've got what you see at the Ellison Development, which for everybody just looks like a big field.
Yeah.
That's actually a dry pond. That's intended to catch water in major events, make that whole thing between those houses and Ninth Avenue a lake, and then release it. It's not that aesthetically pleasing, but it is what it is. It's a dry pond. The other one that was looked at, actually, somebody may remember, it was going to be in the Shaw Development, which it was going to be one lot, and it was going to be a hole about the size of half this room, it was like deep, you know, no end to the depth of this hole to hold it all. That's one way. The third way, Councilor Ben, which is what you see in developments all over now is it just looks like a pond.
The one in the graph?
It just has this, what's the word? They have the, so it always sits with the minimum amount of water in it. And it just looks like a community pond. And then you've got kind of terrace lawn and shrubs. Well, that's meant to hold all the water in the storm. It's all the rest of that. So that's the intention of the one on Ninth and Second, is it's designed, the landmass is big enough that it would hold water all the time as an aesthetic pond, and then be able to expand. And when they designed it, I looked at the design they've got, you know, you're one in five year, one in twenty year, one in one hundred year event, can handle all that. So there's lots of ways to deal with it. That's how that one happens to be designed, as a wet pond.
So if we do that with a wet pond, give us, just off the top of your head, we don't need any exact figures. What are we looking at for, for, for cost for that?
Half a million bucks.
Half a million bucks.
Half a million dollars?
Yeah.
For an aesthetically beautiful pond?
Well, beautiful is relative, but yeah.
Pleasing. A pleasing pond, because Lethbridge, the city of Lethbridge, you drive all over that place, and that's their rules, isn't it? You know?
Oh, yeah.
Do they use them for a in-block park sort of thing?
Stone Ridge on the west side was one of the first developments in Lethbridge to incorporate stormwater catchment ponds into the whole landscaping of the development. Because that was started back in oh-one, oh-two, somewhere in there, and these new regulations had come out. So when you go through there, there's that kind of a big pond in the middle of a park area. It's a storm catchment pond. That's what it is. But they made it look like they just put a duck pond in the park, which is very...
That was the same over in Kodiak on the north side there in the uplands. They got one near my brother's place, and it looks very nice, but you know, that's what it is.
All right. So here is a little bit of a discussion that we need to have. Who wants to start? Don't look, we sound, because otherwise we're nowhere. Councilor Ben.
What other funds have we got? Unless, if we don't do off-site levy, what other funds can we obtain or get to develop infrastructure?
Your MSI money will have to be diverted towards that expense.
No, we're not guaranteed MSI money.
And you just hit it.
We have two years left.
So that's why I'm asking, is there other areas?
That is it in terms of infrastructure.
Yeah.
So just a question, when a developer does sell a lot?
Yep.
And they pay that upfront cost, where does that money go? Do we earmark that money for, for projects?
Yeah. The legislation requires that it is, that it is kept separately and booked separately.
And so if we were going to put in a pond somewhere, that money could go towards that, right?
We do it in a kind of a roundabout way, not related to levies, where anytime the town sells land, we reserve that money immediately into a, what's the name of the account we use now?
Land reserves.
Say that again, just a second.
Land reserves.
Yeah, into a land reserves. And so then anytime we need to invest in land, we use that money. So we kind of have this in and out on land sales. Now, the town is reaching the end of its owned inventory. There isn't much of that left. So what we have, I think there's about three hundred and something thousand dollars in there right now. That's, you know, aside from a few other small parcels, that's what we have. And then we just simply don't own any more municipal land. The same thing applies, Councilor. Anything that comes in as a levy must be banked, must be booked separately, earmarked, managed separately. It can't go into general revenues. It cannot be cash flow for operations, let's put it that way.
So although we don't have an off-site levy per se, we do have some fees that we charge developers when they do sell a lot.
So depending on the development, like we said, if you're Ellison's, we'll use that one, for example, that phase one Ellison's, yes, they pay us just under a thousand dollars for the connection fees to the utility. And that's way lower than what a normal connection fee would be, but they pay for all the infrastructure inside that development. We don't extend anything except to the parcel. And then they pay us a little bit for that. So each one is a bit unique in their development.
Councilor, start.
Mayor, I think it boils down to a simple question of fairness for all the other taxpayers. There's going to be any development happen on the East Hill. I don't want to be paying for a storm pond on the west side.
Okay. Councilor Brown?
I've been just kind of milling this in my, in my mind. The original reason that this was rescinded is pressure from contractors and the landowners and that we're going to develop...
and that we're going to develop. They knew they were going to develop down the road and they were putting the pressure on because they were thinking that this was going to maybe slow their development down and that they wouldn't be able to recoup those costs over a period of time. But yet, the taxpayers, since this bill, this was rescinded, have had to contribute somewhat to help those developers to sell their lots and develop their lots. And we're kind of going the way that Counselor Selk is going. I don't think it's fair that the taxpayers should have to subsidize contractors.
Which was...
And I think that when contractors start to, for better term, they're putting the fear that our growth is going to slow down because they're not going to sell their lots and, you know, that kind of stuff. And in my opinion, so be it. I'm not thinking that we're going to... In time, we're going to have people come here anyway because they like this community. And they know that they're going to have to spend three times the cost to buy a lot in Lethbridge. Right now, to buy a service lot in Lethbridge, a small lot, is $150,000. And some of them are $300,000 to $400,000. And they're not big lots. And our lots here have been suppressed in price even since the levy was taken off because there used to be, you know, all these Darren Shaws, for example, they were $68,250. I sold a couple of them for them, right? But now they're having a hard time getting $50,000, right? But they still have their costs involved there. But that isn't a function of this... It's a function of what's going on in the market today. There's a slowdown in the market today. But that's not going to stay like that. It's not going to stay stale like that in time. It will pick up again. And people will start to realize that it's going to cost them. So, my feeling is, is that there should be something in place. There should be some kind of levy. The contractor should be responsible and they'll recoup those from the sale.
Okay.
That's my feeling.
Can you give me a chance? So, here's a little bit... Counselor Brown, where are you on that issue? Okay. Counselor Drew, I have a feeling that maybe you would be interested to see something similar?
Yeah, I have another question, but go ahead.
Okay. But would you say you agree with that type of reasoning? Okay. Counselor Van Groot.
Let me throw a little bit of mud in the soup. If you charge an off-levy site regardless of what area in the community, that enhances our community for future growth, which enhances our tax revenue. Whenever we have something built, it increases our revenue on taxes. So, if we put an off-levy tax on the west side and nobody's going to pay for it on the east side, how does that, you know?
I don't think that's what Counselor South was saying. He's just saying that the east people don't want to subsidize people on that. And the west people don't want to subsidize people on the east either. So, I think if it's equal to everybody...
Essentially, what I heard, if I can maybe rephrase what I heard, is that a developer will develop by paying his fair share of levies.
Exactly.
What we need to decide is do we want it to be uniform levy regardless of where you're going to develop?
Yes.
And if that is something that we want, that'd be already one direction. So, that might be the first place we want to go to. The second place we want to maybe kind of examine a little bit better is where is the... What is the proper amount of levy we want to go? There's a high, there's a low, there's nothing, or there is all. Do we want to find somewhere...
Somewhere near ground.
Somewhere in between that becomes something more palatable.
Well, again, I look at McGrath and Raymond. What they've done with theirs, they've put a flat fee. It's not an off-site levy, but it's a flat fee for the property sold. And I think that's a clever way of doing it.
If you look at Calgary, Calgary has a flat fee per lot of $6,000 something, $6,600 or something. That's another way to look at it. But that's a recoup of a cost. That's a different story.
So, just a couple of things to what Counselor Van Groot and Counselor Selk said, because I heard it a little different, so I'm just asking for some clarification. Counselor Selk, is your concern that a uniform levy isn't equitable and that it should be based on each area structure plan? Or that a uniform levy is the equitable way to go? I heard both there.
Uniform levy that is equitable. That's what I meant.
Okay. So, and the uniform levy that is equitable means then that we need to kind of look at the high and the low and kind of find something in between?
One other thing I wanted to mention, and I say this carefully because I do not know the details. When we looked at McGrath and Raymond, I think they, it says something like that they charged this per-lot fee by resolution. I'm not convinced that has a lot of teeth. And what I mean is, we cannot pick an arbitrary number for the levy. I have to be able to show Joe and Jane developer to say, the reason you're being charged a levy is you're paying X percent of this, 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 and this project.
Yes.
And that's what it is. I can't pick an arbitrary number. Now, can we get very close and round the number? Probably. You know, so if we did all the math and the number was $6,120 and we said, hey, for the next four years, let's just set it at $6,000, a guy can probably justify that. But just to say, $1,000? Call it a connection fee then. Call it something. But don't call it a levy.
Yeah.
Because it comes with some strict rules.
Okay. I agree with that. So, Counselor Drew?
No, go ahead. Do you finish that? I want to make sure that I understand. I think maybe I'm a little confused. So, at this time, we've waived this levy for the last...
Since 2012.
Twenty-twelve.
Six years.
But when someone comes to us and wants to develop, we have an agreement with them saying that when you do sell the lot, you will pay us X amount of dollars. So, it's kind of like a levy. And we recoup all of that cost or some of that cost?
It's all over.
Right. And then on this other end, if we had an off-site levy, would it be kind of similar? So, I guess I'm thinking, we are really, we are recouping some of those costs as we sell a lot in town because we have that agreement with several developers. So, we are getting that money. It's just over a twenty- or thirty-year period.
We're sharing the risk with the developer?
Right. And so, with a levy in place, we're not risking anything. We're getting our money upfront.
You could make that the condition. You could say, we're going to do a levy. It's going to end up at $5,000 an acre. But it is to be paid in full by the full subdivided parcel before any... Before development agreement is...
And does that happen in Lethbridge and...
Yeah, I think those major centers are all upfront.
Calgary for sure.
But as a smaller communities, I'd be honest, I'm not terribly opposed to having, even if it's not when you sell. Because again, somebody subdivides 10 lots and... I'll use an example that may not be fair, so I'll preface it with that. We're going to talk about West Area Structure Plan next week, where we're taking that parcel that Mr. Schaefer bought and wants to put it into 12 lots, I believe. But what if it's not his intention to even want to sell Lot 1 till he dies? He just wanted it subdivided so it was set up for him later, you know, in life. And if his kids want to do something, great. Well, if we allow the subdivision, but we don't require payment until it sells, we've effectively said we don't want to get the levy in our lifetime.
That's right.
That's what we've said. So, what it will do though, and this isn't wrong, there's nothing wrong with this, it would suggest that the owner simply would not subdivide more than what they want right now. So, if it was payable upon subdivision, if I had 10 acres and I wanted to live on it, I'm not going to make 12 lots right now. I'm going to make two. I'm going to make one for me and the rest. And so, only, I'm only paying it on the one. So, there's ways to work through it. There's no doubt. One thing I want to throw out, again, I'll use your mud in the soup analogy, Counselor. Darren Shaw's was different. Darren's was not an off-site levy. Because Darren had land on an established road, there was already water, sewer, road. Those were actually onsite levies. That was to reimburse the town for costs that they had invested, that they did not charge him when they did it. And so, they said, oh, now you're going to be the beneficiary of all that existing infrastructure. Here's the per-front foot cost and we'll assign it to each lot, but we will share the risk with you and you can sell it when you can pay us when you sell the lot. So, that one's a little different because those were literally for costs on his development site.
So, when it comes to fairness with east and west, we are recouping that cost. It's just over many years, so...
I wouldn't suggest that on the Ellison and Atkins Development right now, at the 285 per utility, you are recouping off-site stuff. It's too small. It's just not there.
Okay, so that's kind of where I was going from when I saw those costs. They don't recoup a lot. That's just a bit of money. But when I look at the projects that are coming down the pipeline here, I look at $11.2 million. Some of that is going to be paid for through funding that we get MSI and maybe perhaps some grants. We, to be fair, I think you have to look at these and look at the benefit that's going to be on those future projects that are going to be there because they're going to benefit from them. And I think we need to look at that and see... And like you're saying, you have to justify the levy, right? And that's some work that you're going to have to do with your financial department. And then we come up with, you know, if it's $5,000 a lot or whatever it is, that's money that's got to pay for this because we're certainly not going to be able to enforce it and ask the taxpayer to pay for this because a lot of these things are for newer areas that are not for the existing areas, right? So, it has to be fair. And so, I think that we've got to look at that somehow.
So, would you want to look at a levy that would be like Calgary in some ways, per lot?
Yeah. I think that's a fair way. When I first started in real estate, I sold a lot of lots here in town. And there was an off-site levy on them before, you know, it's been gone for six years. But every lot that I sold, I could tell my clients exactly what they were paying for. I could tell them that this is what they're going to pay for their sewer hookup. This is what it's going to cost for that light overhead. This is what it's going to cost for the sidewalk and the curb and gutter. That was all broke down. I can't tell them that now because it's not there. But I could. And when people ask me, well, why is the cost that... I could explain, oh, okay, they understood that. There's no understanding now. They're just saying, holy miracle, it's a lot of money for that lot. Because I can't show them the breakdown anymore.
Okay. Counselor South?
How about in the interest of time, not giving a headache, we just direct administration to... Because there is an appetite for a levy. And it's just to direct administration to come back with some sort of proposal.
An average figure.
It's fair. It's fair. And then at the same time, it will bring some sort of structure to this because we seem to be all over the map.
Yeah.
And that's just, leave it up to administration.
So, that's what I was trying to understand. I have one question for you though that we need to entertain. Jeff was talking about historical costs of projects that have not been recouped up to now. There is possibly an appetite for us to look at it tonight and decide, do we want to see the MSI portion recouped by having a special levy for those infrastructures?
I want to ask further. Do you want to entertain trying to recoup previous costs?
And that's what it is.
Or is it everything going forward?
We need to look at it and... Because that will factor in that average figure we are requesting. So, do we want to leave historical costs aside, say to ourselves, we intended to do it for the benefit of the whole MSI money? Is we need tax money of all taxpayer back into the system?
I'm just going to say, where do you draw all that? So, we go to the residents of, what was it, Jeff's Second Avenue, and say, well, we just repaved all this, so now we want the money back.
Yeah, so, we... Let me clarify that. You cannot put a levy on a lot that is developed.
No.
Like that's gone. But what I'm saying is, let's take, well, let's take the east area because it's still pretty empty. We could go back and say, well, no, I'll use west. I like that one better. Let's look at the rest of the Ellison Development. Not subdivided. We could put a levy to say, you know that big trunk main we put down Lee Creek at $1.6 million? That's to benefit your development. So, even though we did that four years ago and it's over, we're still going to recoup costs from your undeveloped portion of your development for that historic cost. But by no means can we go back to subdivided and developed lots at this point to recoup. It's only on undeveloped.
Yeah. That's what I understood.
That's what I was going to say. So, it's not... So, the existing homes that are there right now, we can't...
No.
We can't go for that. But the empty ones that are sitting right now for future...
Correct.
It's moving forward.
Yeah.
So, the next phase of that development?
Depending on how thoroughly it's been subdivided. Some of that phase two is subdivided. I don't think it's going to move forward in its current subdivision. So, there'd still be that potential. But there's also another 10 acres that are totally unsubdivided. So, it could go on that, yes.
Counselor?
So, I actually like the fact that with the plan that we've kind of talked about, we're not going in a shared risk with a developer. We're getting our money upfront. And I think that's really the way it should be. And if we can do it equitably across the board and have a fixed amount, I would be comfortable with that.
How am I to understand that? Counselor?
Okay, so we got a vacant lot in a residential area. It's been vacant for the last 30 years. What do we charge for somebody coming in and building on that lot?
Right now, what do we charge?
Yep.
So, they, well, if we had an infill lot, I'm trying to think where there's one close...
Right across the road. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Which one?
The old tax place right between Paines and...
So, it's an empty lot.
Yep.
It's an empty lot. It's already subdivided. It was subdivided 80 years ago for all we know. It is not subject to a levy. It can't be.
It has to be a new subdivision.
That, a house going on that lot, we could not justify saying, you need to pay a portion of that trunk main that we put in. It's not demanding on the infrastructure. It's not causing a stormwater pond to be built.
Okay.
But if the West Area Structure Plan has 30 more homes on it in the next five years, it now necessitates a stormwater pond to be built, which wasn't necessary unless those homes went in. But any infill wouldn't be subject to a levy.
Even if we upgraded the water delivery and sewer delivery?
That would be maintenance.
Not normally. I mean, if we go up Second Avenue, which we've almost completed, we're doing Fifth right now, there's no intention to charge those residents for the cost of that upgrade, partly because they've been paying utility rates and taxes in that location for 50 years since it was done originally.
But Jeff, right across the road here, west, we've got a vacant property that's been there for 60, 70 years.
Well, and it's going to stay that way because it has sewer and storm coming through it.
Yeah.
It's a public utility.
Okay, but if there wasn't...
It wasn't.
If there wasn't, and we put a new property in there, somebody builds a new hole in there, what is their hookup fees?
Do you remember Jill on the bylaw right now? $3,000 and then $2,500, $5,500 bucks?
$5,500 bucks, I think that's what it is.
For water, sewer, electrical?
Okay.
Yeah.
That was different, though, that's fee.
That's different. That's to connect into the utility infrastructure that exists. It's not for future.
Essentially, what we are talking about when we're talking about that average levy Essentially, what we are talking about when we're talking about that average levy has to do with new subdivision, future subdivision, not what is established, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So there is a desire for this council to ask administration to come up with that average figure that would be a fair figure and that would also take in account historical costs for future subdivisions and development. Am I correct? Yes? Yes?
Yes. Why do you have to call them offsite levies? Or are you having to call them just a?
You know what? I think you call it offsite levy because exactly what it is.
Exactly, yeah.
It's exactly what it is. All right, so it seems to me that's a direction for administration to come back with some sorts of equitable, fair figure. And I'll leave it up to you.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, councillor. I know that was a lot of discussion. But when we got bearing down on this, we said, how do we even draft the first version of this at this point?
Right.
If there's maybe not even political will for it.
Right.
So I appreciate that. We will come back. We'll consider our previous sunk costs. I should, I'll mention one of the things that councillor Self wanted me to move on to a new item. But we do put, you do, and it's reasonable, put timeframes on these. So if we say, here's the list of projects and this is the levy for X years. Because we're not, if we don't do that third storm pond for 30 years, it's not reasonable at that original price. It's still what we're levying. So that levy can change on a, you know, probably three, four, five year basis as you review costs. So it just kind of sets out what it is today. That way you're capturing your more appropriate market cost at the time. But we'll get into that a little bit next time and thanks for all that feedback.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor. That was a little bit of discussion, but a good one. All right, let's go on to item seven. Seven A, University of Alberta Executive Education. This is a very interesting cost, course. And I really believe that, first of all, in the type of political climate we are in, trying to work to work reconciliation as per a motion a few councils ago, two or three, three councils ago, I believe. I think it is a good thing to have as a background in order to move properly on that ad hoc committee and to be able to have the right background information. My preference, no doubt, would be for administrator to be able to go there. That is a certain amount of a cost. But I also believe that the benefit would be great for us.
Just a couple of comments and then a possible motion.
But just give me a sec before you do that. But go ahead.
Okay, I agree with him here. I think it's probably best if the first administration does it, particularly the CAO, because he's the constant. All of us could be gone in three years' time. So he's the one who'll have the back. Now, a question I have is, Jeff, in the package that you have sent to us, the dates on there are for 2018.
February, March.
February, March and April of 2018.
Right, you're right. I just got it like 10 days ago, so I assumed it was 2019.
So if this program still exists, then that would be a recommendation, not even make a motion to that effect that we send Jeff to that.
Okay, go ahead.
Good point.
Okay. So subject to this course even existing, I move that we send our CAO to this particular course.
It would be the three module course. All three module course.
Well, it's, yeah, it's one course with three modules, three days. All right, so there's a motion on the table. Are in favor? Okay, there we go.
We never even discussed whether councillor is going to be involved.
Okay, so here is a second portion of the same idea. One we needed to deal with this year. Secondly, I really think that the next discussion would be well to almost take place after the truth and reconciliation ad hoc committee. Because this would maybe help us decide if further training for somebody there should be there. So would you mind me moving to that item and then we can always go back? Thanks. Okay, so the 2018 planning session agenda is there for you. That will take place at the AUMA convention. Is there anything there further that needs to be discussed? We have quite a bit on our plate there, as you can see. It's a strong, strong agenda. And I imagine we can do a lot of good work as we did last time. Are you okay with that? I see three notes. Can I see a few more?
Could I get a motion to approve it? That way I'll set about getting all the background ready to go without fear of any changes.
Once I decide, if we can have a few more.
Thank you.
Councillor Bounce, how are we doing with that agenda?
Well, I was just wondering.
That agenda came from the combined.
Yes, yeah.
Proposals given to Jeff.
I'm just wondering, we haven't assigned anybody to the committee for the truth and reconciliation. Are we going to discuss that at the planning session? Or is that something we're going to?
We.
Because I don't see it in here.
Okay. Can we go to C and then we can always go back once if we had to? Yeah, would that work for you?
Yeah, fine.
Okay, councillor Bantry, how are we doing with the planning?
Yeah, I think we can divert a little bit on this ICF.
But intermunicipal will have more taste to it as we develop it. Every item will have a little bit more. Right now it's pretty well a framework. So I think we're okay. So more.
If I could just mention, I think what councillor Bantry is meaning is, under the intermunicipal collaboration framework discussion, we can probably have robust discussion on relations, not only with the county but with First Nation.
Right.
Which I think is what you're wanting to make sure is included.
Yes.
So I agree that that's something I'll prepare background for as well. And secondly, I know if councillor Ford was here, he would want to have, I put a line called service levels under recreation master plan. He wanted to have some discussion about kind of what was offered and if we had the appropriate people on board to do that. So I intended that that was going to be discussed there as well.
All right, so thank you. So I need a motion. Councillor Brown, you wanted to put a motion forward to accept the agenda?
Yes, so I make a motion to accept that 2018 planning session that will take place when we're at the AUMA on, I don't see the date, September.
September 2018, okay.
Yep.
All in favor? Thank you, councillors. Okay, the next item, seven C, truth and reconciliation. As you could see in your packet, Jeff has given us a little bit of the model that has been adopted in Last Bridge. The model adopted in Last Bridge was a result of a two or three year consultation with different groups, First Nation, et cetera, and really seemed to have been approved by the leadership of the Blood Tribe. So there at the committee, it's a large committee of 15 people. So what we need to decide is what would our committee look like? So for them, they have two elected officials, mayor and deputy mayor. And they have two members at large. They have two people from an education community, two from the business community. And then they have seven members of the communities that are first indigenous members of the Blood Tribe living in Last Bridge, as far as I understand. And then they have elders that I can call upon and different members of the communities to kind of help them with subcommittees. So what we need to decide, what would be an appropriate number for our community of size? Personally, I would say if we had half of that amount, like one elected official, one member at large, one member of the education, one member representing the business community. And if we had three members of the Blood Tribe living in town helping us on that, I think we would have a good committee representation.
So eight people?
Was it?
Eight.
It should be seven, I think.
Mayor, if we request representation from in-town First Nations people, does that have to be approved by chief and councillor?
We believe that we have those people in our communities that will be working on communities issues. And it doesn't mean that at the time, we would not be with chief and councillor at some point. Yes, councillor Self.
So the person at large, is that a general?
In the town, yeah.
Or another member of town council?
No, it would be a member of the community, could be a member. But we decide who that is when we put all the names forward for the people working on it.
I don't think one elected official is enough for a committee that's important. I look at the police ad hoc, we had two, I think two would be a better figure for this. I think it's more important than two. So especially if one can't be there, then the other can be there. Both can be there. But I really think that there should be two. I like to figure the eight or nine, but I really think that there should be two elected officials.
It has to be in a way that is not overpowering. We need to have a little bit of.
Two elected officials not going to empower a group of nine or eight, I don't think.
Okay, well, the way I was thinking of it, but we can discuss that, was that any members that is there should have a replacement. In other words, there should be one that should always be able to take over. So the first seven members are what you call voting members. It doesn't mean that you cannot be there as part of the discussion. But for voting members, if you look at the model that Last Bridge has, they have only a certain number of voting members. Doesn't mean that other people cannot be part of the discussion.
So if they've got 15 members, how many are going to vote?
Well, I'm trying to look at it right now if I could find the right place. Unfortunately, guys, right now I don't have it.
If we take away a privilege of a member voting, does that not take away a reason for him not being there or her not being there?
Okay, so if you look at the Last Bridge group, but that's just a model, okay? It's a model that have taken a lot, a lot of time discussing and with indigenous and non-indigenous people. Okay, that didn't, it just did not play up in a void situation, okay? So they have the mayor and the deputy mayor. They have two committee at large, two education sector rotating, two business sector representative nominated by the Chamber of Commerce, seven indigenous community nominated by LISN. And I'm not sure what it stands for, but Last Bridge Indigenous.
Sharing network.
Sharing network. Okay, that was a sharing, it was not true. Okay. Then they have non-voting members, elders, Blackfoot Confederacy ex-official, director of planning and development, city of Last Bridge administration as required. And then they have co-chairs being indigenous and one non-indigenous, the same way as our power committee is set up. So if we have a mayor and deputy mayor, then we could increase all representation of indigenous by one so that we are in a proper numbers.
I'd suggest that we not put the deputy mayor because that rotates too much. Yes, they're picking on the council. You have the mayor and a member from council. And the education and business, that'll cover both the education business and community at large. You'll have to wear three hats or two hats. And then have four. You have eight committee members, two from council, two from the community, meaning business and education, and four from the Blood Tribe.
Okay, here is the problem with eight. If you have votes, you have ties. Then what do you do?
Well, that's why I suggested nine would be a better number. I don't think it's on the wheelie.
I don't think you'd ever have a problem with the tie. I agree with you.
I do, Mayor. I do have a little bit of an issue, a little bit of problem. And maybe I'm wrong thinking this way. But to not have a Blood Tribe elected official as a voting member, I have a little bit of problem with that, thinking, well, if they're going to have some say, I think they're going to want to have, like they have on the Waste Authority, they want to have a voting member that's going to be involved in that too. So I don't know. I don't want to see a problem being created.
Can I help you with that?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. The reason why I think rightfully so, Last Bridge chose that maybe is because of the conversation that Jeff had with Indigenous Affairs in Edmonton. And that take was, if you want to do a truth and reconciliation, do not go to chief and councillor to start with. Start with members of your community and have them work with you. And that's what's told us. Am I correct, Jeff?
I'll qualify it a little bit.
Okay, go ahead.
She didn't suggest that we shouldn't work with chief and councillor. She just said, if you want to get it up and going, you can focus inwardly on your urban indigenous population to get going right away. Because those relationships may have to take some time to develop. And you don't want to wait so long to get going. You don't start the process. So the recommendation was focusing on your urban indigenous population.
But councillor Bounce, to your question and worry, when that was developed, when that committee was developed, it was celebrated as a grand beginning with drumming, with blessing of the elders and with a member of council present. So that was their blessing to that committee. And that is a model that would be well to follow.
I would hope that that would be something that would happen here.
But that's what I mean. That's a model we're trying to follow.
Yeah.
It was successful there. There is no reason why it could not be successful here. You still have questions, whereas of course we all will until we see it.
I do have, I do have one concern, like councillor Self said. I don't think that with the rotating of the deputy mayor every eight months, you're going to have enough consistency with that person. I think it needs to be a council member that's chosen, that's on that committee through the process.
Okay, so essentially, go ahead councillor Bantry and finish my thought in a minute.
With all respect to your office as mayor, I sometimes wonder if we don't load you up on these committees and if we just open it to two members of the council, regardless whether you want to be on it and one member of the council or two members of the council.
I'm going to tell you, knowing First Nations indigenous people, the mayor is who they want.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And there is a certain amount of protocol that needs to be followed in order to be successful. And I'm not loaded up. I'm happy to serve.
You're retired.
Okay, yes, I'm retired. All right, so here we go. You want a mayor and you want a designated second on that vote. So there would be two. Now, the reason why I thought a community at large is because a community at large is made of faith group. And in order to be successful in this community, I really believe that we need to reach out to them. And that's the reason, I think, could be a person that wear multiple hats. But I think we need to. I think we need to re-involve the leadership. And I think at this point, they might be ready for us, to help us. So, this is why I thought a community in large would be a good member. Could you follow me on that one?
Yep.
Okay. The education sector is very important for us. Tell you why. We have members of the community in the education that have a good understanding of First Nations or indigenous affairs, and could be a great support to us, and they live in our community. And that would be definitely a plus for us. So, do you feel comfortable if we had one of them? Okay. Then the business sector, you would not believe how many comments, positive comments I had at a power from First Nations indigenous friends that noticed the Chamber of Commerce representation in the dignitary was huge for them. And I realize that if the Chamber of Commerce is represented, their hope, that they mean their merchants are following. Very important. It's always that representation, and I was very happy to see that representation and that support. So, one business sector, whoever it would be, but I would say the Chamber of Commerce should designate that person. Does it work?
Yep.
Okay. And then, we would have four indigenous community nominated. That is a little bit more difficult to decide, who will nominate them, I'm not sure. But maybe we could send an open invitation to our members in our town, and even contact some of the leaders that we know, and see if it would be able to bring us some contact.
So, this wouldn't be, it says nominated by a local indigenous community group.
We do not have such a thing.
What I was going to say, the only one that I'm aware of is the Moses Lake Community Association, but they're not cards.
No, no, no. We're talking.
We're talking just in town, right?
Absolutely, yes.
In town, right.
But can we not do it like we've done for our ad hoc? You know, you put it out there, people put their names in.
Yeah, that's exactly what I said.
They're making aware, and then.
But we would need to target specifically our indigenous citizens in our town in order for them to respond to the invite, right?
Right.
So, would that work?
Yep.
Okay.
I think so.
So, here we go. And the non-voting members, well, as we go on with subcommittees, this will come together.
Yep.
Okay? All right. Thank you so much.
Mayor, can I just run this back? I want to make sure as we develop this, I've got it right, so we can get the terms of reference going. Two for mayor and council.
Right.
One community at large.
Right.
I think intended non-native community at large, and potentially they represent faith community, potentially. One education representative, one Chamber of Commerce representative, four First Nation community at large.
Correct.
Okay, four, five, six, and nine.
Correct. Okay. And the non-voting members, well, the elders, it would be great if we had some in our communities, but I do not know if we have any.
But we can find that out, though.
So, that's what I mean. That will have to be a little bit of a word. Director of Planning and Development, well, that, Jeff, I think you might be able to give us somebody?
Let me tell you, that seems like an odd municipal assignee in Lethbridge. The reason is, it's the individual who's there. I talked to, I forget his name, his name is also Jeff, I just forgot his last name. He's a director of planning and development, but he was one of the staff members who took a keen interest to it and asked to participate on that long term. So, I don't think there's, the position is not relevant.
Right.
It's just that that person was really keen and wanted to see it through. So, we will, in our terms of reference, have specified administrative support.
Right.
We'll put all that stuff in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much for this good work.
Sorry. One other thing, do you want to have co-chairs?
Yes, absolutely. Well, the co-chairs for us on the power committee worked very well.
Who was that? What was his name?
Marcel.
Marcel?
Yeah. Yeah. But it's up to you. A co-chair gives more legitimacy to truth and reconciliation, in my opinion. Okay? All right. Thank you so much. We're doing good work today. Not that we don't do any of them.
As opposed to.
Thank you. Okay. The financial report is there. There was one question that I asked Jill.
You missed one.
Seven.
Sorry. Seventy-four, we ask councillor South, do you want to talk about this item, please?
Sure. Things are moving forward with our trade quarter. We've gotten letters of support from a number of communities, plus South Girl, plus Sabra Southwest, and because of that, I had a meeting with Grant Hunter in LA, and he suggested that we meet with the Minister of Transportation, Ryan Mason, who's also the House Leader of the government. So, he's going to arrange a meeting so that.
AUMA.
No, probably before AUMA. So, that's the intent of this, is that we get council's blessing for myself, or an alternative, if I'm not able to go, to Edmonton to meet with the Minister of Transportation.
Well, councillor, it's your initiative. Why would I send somebody else?
Well, I'm going to be gone all next week, and right now, Grant is unsure about when this would happen. He can't say, well, we'll make sure it doesn't happen while you're gone. It's like, no, the minister says he's got time, that's, we gotta go.
Why are you putting us in a nice boat?
In theory, we support us.
Right. So, I'll just outline, maybe if I might, my intention if I go would be to use the town card to stay with friends, and it would be up and back, not the same day, but I'll stay overnight with friends. That's my intention, if I go.
All right. So, what you're requesting is for a blessing to go, but you also need to have coverage for a couple of days of per diem.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, all right. So, let's put a motion forward regardless. Councillor Barnes?
So, are we ready for the motion?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, I make the motion that councillor South have the opportunity to meet with the Minister of Transportation as soon as he gives us the date, and that would cover his per diem and gas going up to Edmonton and that.
No, no, not gas, because it's using the town card.
Just his per diem. The costs of transportation.
Per diem and his hotel costs and food.
No hotel.
No hotel.
No hotel?
Just his per diem.
And food. Needs to go back and feed himself a whole.
I could take crackers from home.
Anything else we're adding into this?
Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right. Now, here is yet, the second part of the question is, who will go instead? I suppose I'm the ex-official.
Yes.
So.
Yes. That was going to be my recommendation, Mayor, is that if I don't go, you go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll throw this out there, just given familiarity with the proposal, would you want to send Alex? Like, in the event you can't go, he's familiar with the proposal. I recognize he's not an elected official, which may not be as palatable to the minister. That's my only concern.
It's the mayor. He needs to be the mayor.
Okay. Besides, isn't Alex on holiday? Oh, yeah, he's on holiday for the next two weeks, that's right. So, all I need is next week covered. Okay. Yeah.
All right. Next week.
The mayor wants, the mayor's on vacation.
I'm not there.
I can go. I have to. I can make the trip if I need to.
Could you?
Do I want to? No. Could I? Yep. I mean, I could look at what flight out of Lethbridge is.
Jeff was all our blessings.
I mean, if we make it through next week, we're good.
Yeah, we just need the rest week to.
Okay. Well, you know what you have to do.
Have you voted on that motion?
Well, include, include.
It was?
An amendment to the motion includes Jeff. That's the secondary.
Well, I think the motion was voted on. She presented a second topic here. So, then I can make a further motion that in my absence, if I can't go, then we appoint Jeff, our CAO, to go in a different place.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right. So, that's done. Financial report under eight. There is a statement there, financial statement for you, for your information, that is dated June the 30th. I had one question for Jill, was regarding the tax receivable, and I asked Jill, okay, where are we now? Because I was in a $600,000 of tax receivable, and I was thinking, hmm, interesting figure. So, I called and asked, what is now the figure? And Jill told me it was in the $220,000. So, we are back on about, yeah, just about, right, the $220,000 of receivable represents about four years of taxes back, so it represents 2018, 2017, 2016, 2015. So, as you know, it takes three years before you can really put any kind of house for sale for sale for tax, to recoup tax. So, you will always have kind of backlog that you're trying to recoup, and Jill is extremely good at seeking payment of taxes, or to, with Jill, to see that arrangements are made to get money, a program put in place to recoup the taxes. It's in our interest, of course. Okay? So, that was my question for Jill. Do you have any other question for Jeff regarding anything else? That was the only thing that blatantly was there for my questioning.
We need a motion to approve the report.
No, you don't approve them anymore. It's a financial statement that is.
Can I move a little break, then?
Okay. If you need to have a break, absolutely.
I move to have a recess for a few minutes.
Okay. Thank you very much. You have some little nibbles over there.
Do you need to vote on that?
Yes. All in favor? Thank you very much.
I checked, it's not 16 yet.